Please call the roll.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Bridge. Counselor Bender is participating via telephone.
Here.
Counselor Stanberg. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Joyal is also participating by telephone.
Here.
Counselor Finsland. Counselor Herrick. Counselor McKenzie. And Counselor Brown.
Make a recognition of quorum, we'll proceed. I want to thank Counselors Joyal and Bender for participating during their personal time and also Counselor Brown for coming in during his recovery. Thank you. Counselor?
If we get to a point tonight where we have to take a roll call, it has been the practice of this council and councils in the past that we rotate the roll. And it would be, the last meeting started with District One, so it would be District Two tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is approval of the minutes from the September eighteenth, two thousand and twelve regular council meeting.
What is the pleasure? You've heard the motion as second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item five point one is a public hearing regarding a resolution by the Public Works Department authorizing the following alleys to be blacktop within the city of Superior between Coming and Baxter Avenues and North Thirteenth and Fourteenth Streets, North Twelfth and Thirteenth Avenues East and East Fifth and East Sixth Streets, North Twenty First Street East, and Belknap and Second Avenue East and East Third and East Fourth Streets.
What is the pleasure? It's a public hearing, I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye. I mean, I'm sorry. I'm confused. All those that wish to speak in favor of, please do so now. Yes, sir.
Kim Culp, I live at thirteen oh one Baxter Avenue, and I'd like to speak on the alley project. I'm neither for nor against, but I think the county bears some of the burden of replacing this alley because the alley was not in bad shape until when they were building this building, there was about a three days of a continuous stream of cement trucks down that alley. They, when they did the continuous pour for the jail, they had a steady stream of trucks kind of going around the loop that included that alley. So I think somewhere along the line that the county bears some of the burden or the, for the shape that alley's been in for the last ten years. Thank you.
Thank, you will take that under discussion with the county. For the second time, those who wish to speak in favor of may do so now. For the last time, those who wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Hearing none, those who wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. And for the last time, those who wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Hearing none, I'll ask the pleasure of the council.
Motion approved.
For the motion as second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Item six is the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion before this to move the budget up to the eight point one to follow the consent agenda.
Second.
For the motion as second to move eight point one up after the consent agenda.
Right.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I would like to-
For the motion as second to approve the consent agenda, Counselor McDonald.
I'd like to pull six point one four, number one.
Six point one four, number one.
Yes. Can I speak on it? I would like to refer this back to Public Works Committee. I checked into the cost of doing this, and with our budget issues that we have going on, I think we as counselors need to think about how we are spending our citizens' money going forward when we present special things for approval. I think maybe we should have the price listed. We all want to do special things for our constituents, but we also need to be physically responsible. Thank you.
For the second, motion as second for referral, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Fourteen, six point one four, sub one. I'll ask the question again, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried.
For the second, motion as second for referral, all in favor signify by saying
aye.
Aye.
Fourteen, six point one four, sub one. I'll ask the question again, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. The remainder of the consent agenda is before you. There's a motion and a second to approve with the exception and referral. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item eight point one is Mayor Hagan is submitting the two thousand and thirteen general fund operating budget updates and scenarios.
At the last meeting, we proposed to offer three scenarios for the operating budget, general fund operating budget for two thousand and thirteen. The three scenarios are before you. The one that I've recommended is a three point eight percent levy increase which equates to twenty six dollars per every one hundred thousand of evaluation. The second, or the second scenario is with a two percent levy increase which is about less than thirteen dollars per one hundred thousand. The third one is a zero percent levy increase, maintaining the levy as we know it for this particular operating year. I still recommend the three point eight percent levy increase due to a lot of factors. The first one is not just looking at operating budget year of two thousand and thirteen. It's more so with regard to operations that are forthcoming and will be before our discussion and decision making in the ensuing years, looking out at these three years. For every portion of services that we reduce or cut, it's pretty well assured they'll never be back. That just isn't what happens in a normal process. Second, we have very little ability with regard to capacity for two thousand and fourteen and beyond. Third, we already facing shortfalls in shared revenue. Congress is going to reduce domestic spending by ten percent. We don't know what that means to us or if it means anything at all. We still have unknown revenue sources that may or may not be available at the state level in the future. So unfortunately, and it's happening everywhere, budgets are being very much in consideration for major discussions. But it boils down to, is it what the services the public would live with or wish to have. The three point eight percent increase in levy provides for services as we know them today. It also provides for reinstating two positions in the fire department, which are right now vacant. It also provides for other opportunities for refinement within operations. And without that, I submit the fact that I believe we will be, we will be having more severe discussions this time next year with the inability to do anything about it because of the compounded effect that no levy increase or even a two percent levy increase will have upon that discussion. Those things compound themselves, and we will be in a compounded situation next year if we don't address this at this time. It's regrettable that we have to consider that, but just like everybody's home or business, operations are expensive. We do what we can without. Gas prices go up, diesel prices go up, right down to the grocery bag at the grocery store. The utilities go up, and we're not exempt from any of that. So I'm asking the council to consider tonight the adoption of this budget with a three point eight percent levy increase. Thank you.
Move to approve adoption of the budget with a three point eight levy increase.
For the motion as second for adoption, discussion. McKenzie?
Yeah. Don't exactly know how to start with this, but I know that sometimes these things are inevitable. I think the people, I think, expect us to, you know, look at all of these things prior to raising taxes. Can you guys hear me on the phone? Anyways.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, a little bit.
It's somewhat better now, thank you.
Moving right along. These are tough jobs that we have here. I think everybody up here would agree with it. And when the people elect us, when you go out and you run a campaign and, you know, you talk with them, and they ask you, they ask you to listen primarily, and they want you to be their voice. And I've done that, and I've listened. And the general consensus out there is taxes are too high already, why are you raising my taxes already? Some more. We could live with, with cutback on some services. And they expect us to look at this and, and trim things and do our due diligence to do everything that we can before we raise those taxes. And I don't think that, I don't think that we've done that here. And so I want to be the people's voice, and the people's voice are saying, not now. We've had enough. So, thanks.
Counselor Brown?
Yeah, I have to agree with, with Mickey. I don't think, and I'm sorry that I was gone, but I had to have that operation, and that I was not able to be in on the meeting or discussion about different things that we could cut without going after the fire department and the police department and, and things like that. But I think there's other places that we can find the money to cut. And I really, really would like to have at least one more meeting on this where we can sit down at the table with all of us and probably at our next meeting. And I don't know if time allows for it, but if we have to have an emergency meeting, I would really request that because I just truly believe in my heart that there are some places that we can, can challenge this and get down to bare bones without hurting services to the citizens. Thank you.
Counselor Bridge?
Well, it's unfortunate that we're in a position to, you know, to have to consider this, you know, based on, more than anything, on revenue that we've lost, shared revenue that we've lost from the state. I, for one, don't think that our law enforcement and fire departments, agencies should look at being cut. That would be a, you know, it would impact public safety, and that's not something I'm willing to get behind. So, you know, the Finance Department and the mayor, I know that they've spent a lot of time looking at ways to save money over the last year. We spend a pretty good amount of time in Finance Committee meetings every month. I think over the last couple of weeks, there's been an awful lot of time put into looking at places to cut in order to balance a budget without raising taxes. And it just isn't there without taking jobs away from people. And I'm not really willing to look at doing that either. I mean, I see where we're cutting from Park and Rec, and our Park and Recreation areas are already suffering from not having enough money. How much that's been cut over the last ten years is, is just incredible, as well as a lot of other departments. A lot of ideas came out of some meetings that were had in the last couple of weeks, and really it amounts to nickel and diming, and they were all things that, you know, don't really have a real impact, other than to, to sacrifice services. So, it's unfortunate, but I think, you know, we have to, we have to operate the city and, and provide the services that we still have left.
Thank you, Counselor. President Herrick?
Yeah, none of us here, as far as counselors, really want to raise taxes. At the same time, we don't want to have any crucial services cut such as, I look at the police department, which have already cut three officers out of their program, which they normally have, some of those in the command area. Some people may say, well, you know, there's, there's no crime here. Well, there is crime here. It's just that the Spirit Police Department, may not be unable because Spirit Police Department's doing their job. I look at the fire department, the first responders, a lot of times they get there before the ambulance service does. And that could be a difference. And you could be that person out there saying, well, I've never had the opportunity to use that service or need that service. But I look at, well, what if it's my mother? You know, what if she is critically ill and she needs somebody there right away? Well, with EMS from the first responders, I know chances are they're going to get there first, and those minutes could definitely save lives. So with, with these two valuable programs, and they'd be also be on the chopping block along with Public Works, and again, people are saying, well, you know, they're going to be the, people that don't see the difference now will see it if their, you know, if their street isn't taken care of, if the, if it's not plowed on time, if the potholes are getting bigger. That's, that's when you hear a lot of it. Believe me, nobody, nobody wants their taxes to go up. Again, I just want to say we're stuck in that position, and we just have to weigh off those things that are crucial to the functioning of the city. On another note, too, is that there's been a lot of projects done this year, and those people living in those neighborhoods have seen those projects. And if we want those projects to continue for other people, we definitely do, you know, have to take a look at this budget and hopefully that, that this is a positive situation for those if, if the three point, three point eight percent levy increase is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Stanberg?
I just want to, I've seen enough, it's been many years in a row now, we've been splashing everything to the bare bones. Jean, can you just give us a historical of where it's gone over a period of time? Because I don't want, I don't want to put off expenses that the next council or the next group's going to have to deal with.
Certainly, Counselor, I can do that. It's, I can tell you, I remember one of my comments from the last meeting that the two thousand and thirteen budget with the three point eight percent levy increase is very close to the two thousand and eight budget. So that, I don't know if you want me to go into a whole lot of details, but I can tell you that it's gotten much, much more difficult to balance the budgets over the years because we have cut all the smaller items as much as we can, to the point where we're so, we're so tight on our budget that we're really, I think I said this at the last meeting, too, we had a thirty-five thousand dollar excess of revenue over expenses and a twenty-seven million dollar budget for, for two thousand and eleven. That's cutting it really, really close. And I think we've been able to balance the budget with the least effect on employment and capital projects, just because we, we used to have some capacity in the budget, and a lot of it was generated by Public Works returning money back to the budget if it was a winter that didn't require a lot of extra services. But who knows? You don't know what this winter will bring or next winter. So that's just an item that concerns me. And then if I was to go forward, looking forward, this is, this is a really tough year, and next year will be more difficult. The year after that significantly more difficult, unless something changes, something large changes with our revenue sources. I don't know what, what else to say other than we've got lots more problems on the horizon.
I'd also remind everyone that we have removed the contingency fund to zero. And what that does is that we have any, any emergencies, if we have claims against the city, the city has total inability to pay them because we've removed the, was it two hundred and some thousand?
At, at the highest, it was two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
So this budget with a three point eight percent increase eliminates, also eliminates any contingency fund available for claims that may be presented to the city. And as the director said, this budget is thirty-four thousand dollars more than the budget was adopted in two thousand and eight. And we all are quite aware of the fact that the cost of living has dramatically increased in our homes, in our businesses, and for government way beyond a thirty-four thousand dollar item for five years. Counselor Director?
Just for Counselor's information, some timelines that we're working with here. And Counselor Brown, you, you mentioned wanting to have perhaps one more meeting. And here's, here's where we're sitting. We did initially have a public hearing set for October sixteenth. We have canceled that because we did not have enough time between when a budget was adopted and when the public hearing would happen. So we're now, our drop dead date for a public hearing statutorily is November tenth. And we're now looking at November seventh, that Tuesday night council, or Wednesday night council meeting. And so we need to get six votes on something so we can have a budget. So we need that to happen either tonight, and if it doesn't happen tonight, we need to call another meeting sometime between now and next Friday in order for us to have a budget that, Dan, will get published in a timely manner with the telegram and then have at least fifteen days before the public hearing is held. So as you're considering what you have before you tonight, these are our deadlines. It's basically tonight or set another meeting within the next week and a half.
I want to thank the counselors for saying they don't want to see the police and fire department cut, because I do believe that public safety is the first part of quality of life in, in a community. If somebody doesn't feel safe in their home, in their workplace, in the city, they can't really enjoy a high quality of life if there's crime occurring around them, if there's not traffic enforcement and the things that make it safe to live in a city. So I appreciate that. I know you've taken part in a lot of budget discussions, and all the department heads here have, and I'll just speak for the police department. In, I've been told that we would have to make cuts of almost two hundred and forty thousand dollars if there's no levy increase, and almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if there's a two percent levy increase. And as I've sent to you in a document and as I spoke about at our last council meeting, those sort of reductions can't be made by firing less rounds on the range or burning less gas in our squad cars. They come from reducing training, from reducing the purchase of squad cars, and most importantly, in potentially reducing our staffing level. We were able to control overtime through reducing that training to a degree, yet by reducing our staff, staffing level, we create more overtime if we maintain the same minimum staffing, as far as the number of officers who are on the street at any given date or day of the week or time of day. So by reducing that number of the minimal staffing, again, we can cut down on overtime, but we reduce the presence of police officers in our community. We increase response time to calls. We're less able to respond effectively to major incidents that occur, and they happen every year. You can, you can hope you don't have a homicide. You can hope that there's not big incidents that require a big perimeter, but they happen every year. And they'll happen again next year. And with less officers on the street, we'll be less able to respond to those effectively, decreasing public safety and increasing the risk to our officers. Again, thank you for your statements that you didn't want to cut police services, and I hope we don't have to. And I don't think there's any major savings to be made in the police department that don't involve painful reductions. No quick fixes that I've seen beyond a few thousand here and a few thousand there. And we'll make those cuts to be efficient. But those major cuts come with a cost. And while you, the concept of doing more with less is a good concept, there comes a point where that isn't possible anymore, and you get less with less. And I think we're at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Yeah, if I could just respond to that a little bit. When I go around and campaign, and like Mickey says also, you know, when you look your constituents in the eye, you want to be able to look at them and tell them, hey, you know, I did everything that I could do in my power to help your taxes be state level and where it should be. And I don't feel comfortable right now that I can look any of my constituents in the eye and say, I've done everything that I can do. And I think there is a little more that we can do. And I think this is the time to be able to do it. And I understand that we've got hard times coming in front of us, and we all know that. But if we deal with everything that we can deal with now, and when the hard times come, I can go to my constituents and say, we've done everything that we can do. We do have to give you the tax raise that, that they're recommending this time. And I don't have a problem doing that, if I'm comfortable telling my constituents the truth. Thank you.
Counselor Finsland?
I'm a firm believer in paying your bills when they come due. And I really think this is getting tedious kicking this can down the road where we just postpone and postpone a decision. I think we have to make a decision, and we have to make it tonight. And I think we have to approve a budget that will not place a burden on next year's budget. I've been on these budget hearings for eleven years now, almost twelve, and I've never seen a situation quite like this where we've really pinned everybody down over and, over and over again. Some people here won't be on this council next year. Some people will be leaving, and they'll vote against us. They won't care what happens to the council next year, what happens to our city. We have to make a decision tonight. We have to make a decision that affects the future and keeps this city operating as well as it is operating right now. I'm just, I don't think it's right to postpone anything like this. I think we should have made the decision a couple of weeks ago, and I think even before that. We can always modify our budget when we need to, but we should make a decision and get a budget approved so we can have our public hearing on time and keep the firefighters that we have and keep the policemen that we have. We need our city, Public Works working the way it is. And I don't want to see our parks diminished either. I want to see all of our city services continue as they are, as much as we can. I'm sure we can't keep up the Cadillac kind of government going on here. We've made a lot of improvements this year, but they were much needed improvements, and I don't think we're going to be able to continue to make improvements without appropriate budget.
Any other counselors? Counselor McKenzie?
I would like to go forward with what Bob said, Finsland. We need to do something for the future. I know my constituents are very happy about the roads being fixed, potholes. One of the things I got when I was campaigning was, could you please fix the roads? That has been going on, and that will probably have to stop if we don't pass a budget that we can continue with what we've been doing and the projects we've been doing. And I certainly do not want to lose our services as far as the police and fire department and Public Works and parks, all the things our citizens deserve to have and want to have. So we do need to make a decision tonight, and if we don't, it's just going to hurt a lot more people.
Other members of the public wish to speak on this? Marty Curtis?
As folks approach the podium, I'll just remind you, we have a three minute limit, and I'll try to give you a subtle signal when you get close to that, so as not to interrupt.
That would be polite. I'd appreciate that. You know, and Marty Curtis, fifty-three oh one East First Street. And I know the budget is always tough, and like most of you, I've run a couple of campaigns, and taxes has been right up there at the top of things that people don't want to see to go up. And I realize that we have a lot of good city employees that we want to keep, but we also have a lot of citizens that are really struggling. The foreclosure market has been terrible. We've had increases in sewage, we've had increases in fuel and heating costs and water increases. And I think a lot of the citizens can't afford what they have now. And, you know, I don't know where you, you should cut. I guess that's why you guys get the big bucks. You can make tough choices, but, you know, I, I really think you have to look at everything again and, and find some places, because as the mayor said, it's going to get tougher in years to come. And if we don't start figuring out now, in a couple of years, there's not going to be enough money again. And it's just going to keep going. And I spoke with two people and told them I was coming to this meeting. One of the responses was, you're going to drive everybody out of town? And my wife actually said, maybe we should consider moving to Luth. We could afford it there. I don't know what the answers are, but I know the citizens can't afford the increases anymore. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Say, Counselor Bender?
Counselor Bender?
And first of all, I want to say that what everybody has told me about watching this live and listening to it, there is like a five-second delay. And that's, that goes because it's digital, not analog. If it were analog, it would be, it would be on real time. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I've, and I'm going to stand away so I'm not listening to myself five seconds ago. But I'm moving far enough away so I can't hear myself anymore. But anyway, I can't say I disagree with anyone who's spoken tonight. Everything that they've said has made very good sense. I can say that I can even agree with Marty Curtis. The only thing that I would say negative about that is that he's wearing a Viking shirt. But anyway, getting back to the serious matter before us. And as Counselor Finsland said, it seems like we're kicking the can down the road, and maybe it does. But still, and I believe it was Counselor Brown or somebody else had mentioned that we as councilors do have to do diligence, and that's what we're doing. I know in the conversations that I've had, and I've had many conversations about the subject, nobody is in favor of raising taxes. Duh, that goes without saying that nobody's in favor of raising taxes. But some of the comments that I've heard are, somebody asked me, well, if we raise taxes three-point-eight percent, what are we going to get? And what I've had to answer is exactly what you have now. I know speaking to realtors, and of course Counselor Bridge is a realtor, but speaking to realtors, they're not in favor of tax increases just because of the tax disparity between the city of Duluth and the city of Superior. Now, last week, I had proposed five different ideas to trim the budget. And I also came up with an idea of, here's how much it would cost, or here's how much it would save if we were to trim every department three percent, trim every department two percent, trim every department one percent. And in those, I also had a scenario where we don't take anything away from either the fire department and the police department. And I can tell by every one of the speakers tonight that everybody has done their homework as far as taxes go. And I want to praise the police department and the fire department because one of my suggestions was cutting travel by, travel and training by fifty percent, and that that could save about fifty thousand dollars a year. And I know that both the fire department and the police department have been very cognizant as far as travel and also training. And of course, now with the days of webinar where you're able to do this via the internet, that that should be a possibility. Another suggestion that I had made was cutting on publication subscriptions and dues by, and I didn't suggest cutting any of these fully, just by fifty percent. And that would save about twenty-four thousand a year. And that doesn't include cutting anything from that portion from the city council because of course the city council, out of their budget comes publication of the agendas and also the minutes of the meetings in the telegram. And another idea that I had was as far as contract services. And again, I wasn't asking to cut all of the contract services because of course that would infect, or that would not infect, but affect jobs in the private sector too. But if we were just to look at cutting some of those by fifty percent, that'd be two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. And I'll echo what I said a couple of weeks ago when we had the last meeting. And that is that in the public sector, and I worked in the public sector for years too, in the public sector, we would often be told, budget's got to be cut. There isn't any money. So what are we going to do? Here's, here's the budget for each one of these departments, and you have to figure out how you're going to be able to do that. And I know that all the department heads have done a very good job thinking about that and also working on that. And I agree with Counselor Brown that maybe we need to have a get-together where we can all pitch our ideas about this. I know that he was, he was away and he was having surgery, so he wasn't able to add anything on that. And I'm absolutely against any layoffs. We're already too bare bones as far as employees for the city of Superior. And I also spent a lot of time this last week going over point by point by point everything that's in the budget proposals for, for tonight. And I know that the mayor brought up, as did Finance Director Vito, that for a hundred-thousand-dollar house, this is, this would be twenty-six dollars a year. However, that isn't adding in what the other entities are. It's not adding in what the county would be looking toward doing, nor the school district, nor WITC. And I know two weeks ago when we had the last council meeting, when I gave the numbers that I had heard through the rumor mill, Counselor Bridge was able to do something on his phone and figure out that his taxes would raise three-hundred dollars a year based on those possible figures that I had, that I had given, which of course is much more than the twenty-six, six dollars for looking at the typical, or not the typical, but looking at a hundred-thousand-dollar home just for argument's sake. So, and also has, as some other people have mentioned tonight too, you need to take a look at many people being on a fixed income. Many people are repaying, many can barely afford to either eat or buy their medications. And also a couple of things coming very soon in city council is looking at, one was referred tonight was about stormwater, and another one that we saw a couple of weeks ago with a very well-structured report by Kurt Soderbergh as far as sewage bills, but those things are on, are on the horizon. So that, that ends my comments. And now I'm going to go back and, and listen to what comes through online. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd like to address some of the points that you just made.
Please do.
As far as the departments are concerned, what you have in front of you is after very many months, very many meetings with each and every department, and that's a whittled-down department budget that you're receiving here tonight and you have received prior. It isn't fresh out of the box with regard to a wish list that they want. It's after initial cuts that the Finance Director and I recommended they do so we meet the minimum and still provide the services. So the department budgets do not have a first blush review. They've been, every department head here can speak for themselves, but I'm sure they're tired of talking to me and the Finance Director about you need to do more. Number two, subscriptions, training, and travel. I hate to put it this way, but we're talking nipping around the edges. And that's what we're doing when we talk about that. A three-hundred, a three-point-eight percent levy increase by addressing those particular items is going to give you peanuts and savings. Now, with regard to travel, travel's been cut back dramatically. I review all travel requests, and there are some that just don't get to go anywhere. And the only ones that go anywhere is for training. It isn't for frivolous conferences or confabs. I do not travel. I've been there, I've done that over forty years. I don't need to do that. I don't travel anywhere unless it's for an economic development proposal or prospect. Training. The fire department has now down to five thousand dollars a year in training to train our firefighters with the most up-to-date equipment, up-to-date resources and different aspects that they need to be qualified to be firefighters. The police department training budget has been greatly reduced over the years. We're not, as Counselor Finsland said, we're not talking about, we're going to cut this year. The budgets for the last, since two thousand eight have been, and before, have been whittled down dramatically just to make ends meet. I don't, the problem we have here is it's good enough for Superior. I don't like that term. I don't think it's proper to address our community and our constituents that way. That it's going to be good enough for Superior. Good enough for Superior doesn't get us anywhere. You can't stand still in any block of life, in any home, in any business, in any, if you don't start moving forward, you're going to move backwards. And we've been a long, many years without moving forward by cutting and cutting and kicking the can down the road. Duluth, I love to hear this about Duluth's less property taxes. The distinction here is not Superior and Duluth. The distinction is state statute. In the state of Minnesota, and I'll put it briefly and bluntly, property taxes are not the same on an ad valorem basis for every property in the state of Minnesota. If you're commercial, industrial, mining, and, what's the fourth one? You're taxed at a different rate in Minnesota, at a very much higher rate. To do business in Wisconsin is cheaper because the corporate taxes, unemployment, workers' comp, and the state tax formula is cheaper in Wisconsin for businesses than it is in Minnesota. Contrary to that, the property taxes in Wisconsin are equal if you're Harley-Davidson or Terry Callens Home. The levy is adjusted by community, but the property tax, how it's administered, it has not taken into account houses or industries, whether it's Budweiser or whatever it may be. The second thing about the disparity is in the city of Superior, garbage pickup, and I'm going to say the word, is free. It's free. No, what it costs you is nine dollars a month in your property taxes. Every city that I have examined, it's between forty-five and fifty dollars a month on top of their property taxes. In the city of Duluth, the city of Ashland, wherever you want to look, we are the only city in the entire state of Wisconsin that does not do special assessments. And you know what? I will submit to you, that's why the city looks like it looks. Because with the budget we have, we can only blacktop X number of streets per year, put down so many sidewalks, improve the parks, whatever. In every other city in Wisconsin, if you live there, you would be paying a special assessment for the curb in front of your house, that sidewalk in front of your house, the sewer in front of your house, or whatever else it is in the public, the public realm. So when people tell me that, yeah, but it's cheaper to live elsewhere, there is a whole lot of hidden costs or evident costs that are up and above a property tax in most every city in this country, except good old, good enough for Superior, Wisconsin. I will not accept a budget that's going to remove firefighters from our department, police officers from that department, reduced equipment, further cuts in training, and Public Works people being let go. Public Works used to have forty people in the street department. They're down to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Park and Rec used to have twenty-some people in the parks. We're down to eight, down to eight. The fire department used to have, you took some massive cuts in the nineties, and on and on and on. There's, most of the departments have two people in them, two. And some departments that have the pleasure of having three, like the city clerk's office, or finance with five, and on, with, planning is down to one right now with one on medical leave or two. The assessor's office is down to one, I'm sorry, four, and on and on and on. How much further can we go and still provide services that everybody wants, but nobody wants to pay for? If you want your plows to come out and take three days rather than clean it up in twenty-four hours, that can be done. But you're going to have to wait. If you want to wait for an emergency medical call from the fire department, that can be done too. You might die. What do we really want for the good of the community, for the services that people really want? I hear, let's not cut services, but let's cut something else. Tell me what to cut. I'm not going to cut bodies any further. I will veto a budget that does that, and that's where I'm standing right here. And I have the support of a whole lot of people in this town saying the same thing. We want services. We enjoy the streets being plowed. We enjoy the streets being prepared. We love the new streets. We love some services that are enhanced. And we're doing that on a very tight budget as it is. If we have to reduce it anymore, you'll be, the people of this community will be equally or more so unhappy. And it's just of nature. We don't know if shared revenue is going to be reduced anymore. We suspect it will be. We don't know what the ten percent domestic spending cut is going to be in Congress and what effect it will have on communities and people's services. I'm talking real people's services. We don't know what the state revenue body is going to, if it's going to be increasing revenue for distribution. We, but the cities in this state have been reduced forty-eight million dollars in shared revenue. We are pleading with the legislature and the governor to reinstate the forty-eight million. That in and of itself costs this city four-hundred-and-thirty-six, four-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. So where are we to go? I submit to you, if you want the services that you know them today, and there's no candy in this budget, there's no frill in this budget. It's a basic budget providing services we have. We need to raise the levy to produce those services or continue them. Without it, two things will happen. First thing I'll do is veto it. And secondly, you're going to have to readdress it the way you want it because we've given you every participation of attention with regard to how we develop this budget with many cuts, many cutbacks, and many reduced opportunities in the departments to provide the same services. Thank you. Counselor Bridge?
Nice job. Took a lot of the wind out of my sails. This myth that you save money or that you can live cheaper in Duluth is something I'd really like to put to rest. I heard this a lot. It could not be more false. You might pay less property taxes over there, and the mayor covered most of it, but your house is also going to cost you at least twenty percent more, and you have to pay interest on that. You don't have to pay interest on the taxes on your home. So, you know, that's, that's just plain old false. And taxes in Duluth are going up at a faster rate than they are here, as well as assessments for all the streets and sidewalks that are being replaced in the city of Duluth. So that is just absolutely not true, that you can go to Duluth and live for less money. The other thing that I heard from people, when I was out knocking on doors a year and a half or so ago, is I'll move out into the county. Well, that's great too. Sell your hundred-thousand-dollar house in the city, move out to the county where your taxes, maybe you save five or six hundred bucks a year in taxes, and see how well that goes over when your, when your septic system breaks down and you need to put in a new mon system for fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, and how much you like the idea of living in the city with your sewer system and thirty, forty-dollar-a-month sewer bill then too.
Thank you. We have others in the audience that would like to speak to the topic. Thomas LaSage?
Tom LaSage, eight thirteen North Twenty-second. I'll open with an apology. Public speaking ain't my thing. I'm here today to speak briefly about the budget issues within the fire department. While there are many facets to this situation, due to time considerations, I've chosen one to discuss. I have the opportunity to speak to you from three different perspectives. A union president, a professional firefighter with fifteen years of experience, and a tax-paying resident of the city. For the most part, I will speak as the firefighter. A portion of my responsibility within the fire department, along with my coworkers, is conduct fire inspections. The primary goal of these are to notify you, the residents and business owners, of fire and life safety issues. During the course of a typical inspection, we do find violations. Several of these can be corrected while we are present. An example of this would be moving items, blocking an exit door. Sometimes business owners simply overlook the safety issues such as this. On the other hand, from time to time, we find owners who are reluctant or defiant to comply with these rules. This is when the legal end of our system comes into play. Ultimately, the owner can face fines if they continue to violate these regulations. The reason I mention this is that you, the public, entrust the fire department and the police department to have your safety at the top of our priority list. This is why you see many of us here tonight, both police officers and the firefighters. I, as a firefighter, am concerned about the thought of closing one of our stations. I was born and raised in the north in a town, have worked out of station two for the past twelve years. I'm aware of both residents and businesses that will face a greater risk due to the closing of this station. The reason I say a risk is this. Closing our station will result in a longer response times in that area. In simple terms, if you live north of Twenty-first Street, help from us will take longer to arrive. For those who do not know, the reason the fire halls are distributed the way that they are is to accommodate reasonable response times. Additionally, this determination has more to do with what happens to our heart and brain during cardiac arrest than with what happens in a fire. Either way, however, the faster we intervene, the better chance for a positive outcome there is. The majority of our calls has us reaching a scene within three minutes or less. In fact, earlier today, Engine Two responded to a call of a patient not breathing. They arrived within one minute. The patient was successfully resuscitated. The elements necessary to provide the best chance of survival for patient cardiac arrest begin with notification to nine-one-one, CPR within minutes after the arrest, and the application of an AED within four minutes. I mention this because the closing of our, of Station Two, which will likely happen without the proposed increase, would place one-third of this city out of that four-minute window. Again, Engine Two- Again, Engine Two's area is everything north of 21st Street. Similar situations are noted on the fire side of our responsibility. Fire grows at somewhat of a predictable rate. After around five minutes of burning, something called flashover occurs. What this is, is when the small fire inside of a room has raised the temperature inside that room to the point where everything combustible erupts in flame. Instantly, the temperature inside this room will reach excess of 1,200 degrees. Anyone inside this room will likely not survive. This includes firefighters and their protective equipment. By passing the 3.8 levy increase, you allow us to continue to provide the professional service each of you deserve. Anything less than that will be an increased risk to you and your responders.
Lee Sandok Baker?
I'm Lee Sandok Baker. I live at 1016 Coming Avenue. I am a city worker. I'm also a homeowner, and therefore a taxpayer. Tonight, I ask you to take short-term consequences and long-term goals into account, and please pass the 3.8% tax levy increase. Councillors have talked about ways, other than a tax increase, to balance the budget. And whatever way you vote tonight, I hope each and every one of those ideas is seriously considered, because there are probably things that could be cut, resulting in some savings, without a significant loss of services. But at this point, it's my understanding, and it seems to have been confirmed by Mayor Hagan, that even cutting any true fat that may be left within city operations would not come close to balancing the budget. Staff and service reductions required in the scenarios of a 0% or 2% levy increase would cut core city services in the future to a point that would significantly impact the quality of life for those of us who already call Superior Home. These cuts would also make our city much less attractive to families looking to relocate or return here, as businesses like Kestrel and Exodus continue to grow and create jobs. Those families would need to buy or build homes, they would patronize local businesses, and they would pay taxes. We would like them to do these things in Superior. But without a 3.8% levy increase, these potential city residents will likely bounce down deteriorating streets, tour dilapidated neighborhoods, encounter shady characters, and decide to move to Duluth instead. Let's put lofty goals of community prosperity aside, and consider simpler consequences of not passing this levy increase. Consequences as tragic as life lost because the closest fire station is browned out one day, and the response time was just that much too slow. Or the expensive annoyances like breaking a car axle on a pothole that would have been fixed by a city patch crew, had they the manpower. Times are definitely tough, but to me, as a homeowner, raising a family, counting on the police and fire departments to keep my neighborhood safe, and the public works department to keep the infrastructure maintained, the benefits of this nominal tax increase far outweigh whatever I may have spent my twenty-something dollars on in 2013 and the years beyond. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wish to speak to this issue?
My name is Brad Essler, 1619 East 4th Street. I've heard, I don't have anything prepared, I've heard a few things tonight. Obviously, I'm a police officer, and quality of life is what I'm concerned about. I can tell you, as a, as a street officer, that any further reduction in our total staff or in our day-to-day staffing is gonna, it's gonna start to affect our quality of life and actual public safety. We respond to a number of incidents, critical incidences each year, where you need so many police officers to be able to contain the situation, and I fear that any more reductions are gonna be problematic. I enjoy living in Superior. I enjoy the services that I have. I did live in the county, and my septic system collapsed within about two months of me having to replace my well. So, we have, we have good, quality services in this city, and I believe that they are, they are lean, and they are, they are proper, they're properly staffed. Thank you.
Any others?
Mike Yaschak, 4330 East Curran Road. I am also a police officer. I didn't prepare anything either. As I listen to what's going on, and I've been, I've been a police officer here for almost eighteen years, I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the service that, that our department provides this community. I believe that when our budget is in the area of what it was in 2008, I believe that our budget is at its minimum. When we're taking away our contingency plan money, the money that's there for emergencies, and that's taken away, I believe we are at the bare bones minimum. I don't think we can suffer anymore. The community members have a desire to feel safe. I think we're providing that at the bare minimum currently. If we want to keep this bare minimum, we have to pass this tax levy. There's no, it's ands or buts about it. We are operating at the minimum that we can. We've struggled, we've, I've seen it, when I was hired, we had sixty-five officers, we're below sixty now. We are, all of us in the police department are doing what we can to save as much money as we can, because we know budgets are tight. We're at, we're at that breaking point. I think Chief Leges said it. We're there. We are there. I don't think we can suffer anymore without losing services. I was a detective, I am still a detective, and I've made those calls to people where I just don't have time to get to your case. I don't have any more resources to work your case, I can't get there. We're there, folks. We're there. Thank you.
Any others? Counselor?
I'm a resident in South Range. Also, as you can tell, I'm on duty today. One of the battalion chiefs for the fire department here in Superior, I've been with the department for twenty years now. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the fire department, just as the police officers has been doing about the police department. We have three fire stations in this town, I know everybody in this room is aware of that. We used to have four fire stations in this town before my time, some of you might remember that. When this city went from four fire stations to three fire stations, that was a comprehensive decision that was made by the council that sat there at that time. It was a study done, and there was an impact as a result of that. If this is not passed, I prepared some materials that I believe you all have had the luxury of reading. There is nowhere within the numbers, even within a 2% levy increase, we will not end up with two fire stations. I think you have the responsibility to your constituents. You would be making that decision to close one of our fire stations. Which fire station that would be, would be up to you. I don't want to make that decision. We're out there trying to save people's lives every day, and I think we do a pretty good job with what is our minimum budget. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of that, that decision will be made to close one of our fire stations in 2013, if the levy increase does not exist. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hearing none. I ask Counselor Olson.
I'd just like to make one comment, so everybody understands. Most of you folks that have been here before know what I do for a living, and it's create employment. So whatever happens with this vote tonight, I want all of you, all the departments, that there's no intention at all, I don't believe for any of us, to cut any personnel, whether it's the fire department, whether it's the police department, whether it's any of the departments, and/or just anybody at all. I think that's important to know. And I want to tell you all that, for what I do for a living, I'm the business manager of a laborers' union that creates employment, that's what I do, and that's what I'm trying to do here. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll call the, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Wait a minute.
Call for a roll call, please.
The motion is by Counselor Finsland, second by Counselor McDonald, to approve a 3.8% levy increase. Counselor Bridge?
Aye.
Counselor Bender?
No.
Counselor Stanberg?
Aye.
Counselor McDonald?
Aye.
Counselor Doyle? Counselor Finsland?
Aye.
Counselor Herrick?
Aye.
Counselor McKenzie?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Olson?
No.
Six-four, the motion.
The ayes have it. The motion passed. Thank you, everyone. I thank you also for the very solid discussions we've had over the period of time that this has been before you.
Mayor, excuse me. We probably need a motion to set the public hearing as well for November 7th.
For the motion, and second to set the public hearing on the budget for November 7th? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, we are back to item 7.1, Finance Director Vito is submitting the updated 2013 through 2017 capital improvement program budget.
Heard the motion. Is there a second? Motion and second to approve capital improvement budget discussion. Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, I believe that there's quite a few people that want to speak to this, and I'd like to separate the issue out here about the decrease in animal shelter project by seven thousand, seven-hundred thousand dollars, and the idea of a smaller building. And so, I have some comments, but I think that, I think it would make more sense if they spoke first. That's okay?
Is there a second to separate?
Second.
Heard the motion, second for separate. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. You have a motion on the floor and a second to adopt the remaining portion of capital improvement program, project program. All in favor, signify by, Director Vito?
Just, just so everybody knows what's happening here, we've got a, the revised CIP, I'm sure you all noticed that you have, on one of the long sheets, there was the adopted CIP, which is what is in effect until or if changed. And on the other side, you've got the proposed CIP that has, if it's got a yellow highlight, that means it's changed since it was initially adopted. Most of the changes relate to what we think are better updated inflationary increases. There is maybe one new project, the Bong Bridge, and two other items that we did not have the capacity to fit into our general fund operating budget, which, one is the Namauchi Trailer Park Settlement, the other is the upcoming Boss Electric demo. So, I just wanted to say, if you're inclined to approve the balance of the projects and take the animal shelter out for discussion, it means you've got this amount of funding, 2.3 million, for the animal shelter to consider. So, if the council wants to either increase that number, or decrease that number, or keep it the same, it will have ramifications on the other parts of the CIP. So, I don't know if you want to approve the whole thing right now, or wait until after the shelter discussion, because something will have to change. If, if the council changed that 2.3 million to a higher number, you have to cut something else to balance it.
Yeah, I understand that. And I think, I think what you're getting at, too, Gene, is that this 2.3 million has a lot to do with the capital campaign, and that amount will change, is that right? Or will change, depending on the amount raised by that campaign?
Well, it's, it's a little awkward to answer that question, being that the capital campaign hasn't gone public yet. So, what we've done is, we had an initial amount that was estimated for a capital campaign, and we have said, until we receive X amount for a capital campaign, we're not going to count our, count our funding resources before they actually happen. So, if this helps you out, this is a budget for 2.3 million dollars that has a certain amount of a capital campaign that people have committed to. If that capital campaign goes above that, I don't see why that wouldn't increase the size of the project beyond 2.3 million dollars. But this 2.3 has campaign donations to date, and until that changes, I would recommend that that's the way it's approached.
And the change on this document says it's 391, where it used to be 400,000, is that correct?
No, it's actually at 110,000.
Oh, 110,000.
Yeah. It was originally estimated at 400,000, but it's been at that level for a while, so...
Well, the 110,000 is what, is right where they're at now, approximately.
Close to.
Yes, yeah. So I'm still not sure what you're, what you're trying to allude to about speaking, speaking to this now, or, or later?
Well, if you choose to speak to it now, and let, there's a lot of people that are here that want to address the council, maybe it's best that you listen to what they have to say first, before you make any hard and firm decisions on this CIP as a whole.
Okay.
And then you can still make whatever decision you want to make after you've heard everybody, if you want to approve it as is, you have that option. If you want to change it, you have that option as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Bridge?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think what we're getting at here is, we need to discuss this animal shelter first, and I would make a motion as such.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second on the floor to take the separated item out to discuss it first, before discussion of the capital improvement program. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to hear from the audience?
Rick Salsed?
Yeah, my name is Rick Salsed, I'm Duluth, and I represent Animal Allies. Can you turn that mic on? Is that better? Rick Salsed from Duluth, representing Animal Allies. Our role in this project was to run your existing shelter, and to advise you on the new shelter as it came along. And since day one, our role as advisors to the new shelter project has been to caution you not to overbuild. Overbuilding can create excessive annual operating costs that go on forever. On the other hand, conversely, underbuilding will harm the animals in your community for years and years to come. I've had nothing but good interactions with the people of Superior, with people in the county, with the staff. Everybody's been warm, receptive, and quite pleasant to work with. Nobody wants to shortchange the animals. The city and the county just need a little more time to find some common ground. We are very close to county participation, to capital campaign, larger donations coming in, and township participation. The original intent of this project was to combine and pool the resources of Animal Allies, Animal Rescue Federation, and Humane Society of Douglas County into one modern, clean, visitor-friendly animal shelter. If we were only having two small shelters, they compete for the same resources and duplicate many of the jobs and duties that are necessary in a single shelter. If you build one small shelter, it'll be inadequate for the total needs of your community. The new shelter, as it is built, will attract more animals than your previous shelters have, when the community sees how well cared for your animals are. We at Animal Allies are willing to advise, assist, manage, help in any manner possible. So, please give your community some time to consider all... So, please give your community some time to consider all possible options. You will only get one chance in your lifetime to build a shelter again, and taking the time now to do it right is the right thing to do. We, we want you to build something that instills pride in your community, something that can teach values to your youth, and something that treats every homeless animal in your community with respect and dignity until they have a chance to find a home. So, we simply ask you to table the animal shelter portion of the CPI at this time. Thank you.
Sir, could you come back up to the microphone, please? How big is the facility over Duluth?
About 10,500 square feet.
Thank you.
Hi, just to speak with you real briefly. Marcy Barbie, I'm a treasurer from the Humane Society Douglas County for about 11 years. I actually live in Duluth, but just kind of speaking on behalf of the 300 to 400 animals every year that, that we care for. We've been working really hard the last three years with Animal Allies, you know, to, to merge into one facility. We have expenses of about $100,000 a year. Over that is raised by fundraising, which is all volunteer, obviously. There is no reason to think that that would be able to continue with a shelter. They would be within eight miles of each other. There's only so many resources. We've already seen a decrease in fundraising the last few years with the economy from the local businesses and community members. And basically, we feel that we would not be able to keep open our doors. We have some very large building expenses, up to $50,000, that we have been putting a Band-Aid on the last few years, that would need to be addressed immediately if we're trying to stay open. So, basically, we're, we're not asking the city to put the bill for the county animals. We're just asking that you table this for now and give us a little more time to get the county to commit to some operating expenses, and so we can all move forward. Just today, we, we kind of threw the, the idea out there for people to come support us, and we managed to fill a lot of chairs just reaching out today. So, we have, we have a lot of people out there to back us, and I know we can get there if, if the city allows us a little more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Laterno?
My name's Roger Laterno. I'm a Towne of Superior Board Supervisor and also the Vice Chair of the Douglas County Unit of Wisconsin's Towns Association. I'd like to thank Mick McKenzie for a lot of the work he's done on the shelter, and we talked quite a few times. Our concern on downsizing the shelter would be, when the Humane Society closes, the villages and the towns and the county will have nowhere to take their animals. Our constables won't have a facility, and what happens to them at that point would be a 22 shell. And I don't think that's fair to our animals. There's just no place to take them. As a town association, we've got commitments from other towns to contribute annually to the cost of running the shelter. And I was just informed that Doug Finn, the county chair, wants to have another meeting to see if they can find some money to help the operating costs. And I think the city initiating this project, and we worked together on that 10,800 square foot building, in the assumption that it was going to be for the whole county. And now to have it downsized to 6,300 square feet would really leave all the villages and the towns with nothing. And we don't really know where we'd go from that point. And I feel that, since it was initiated by the city, that if it could be tabled and find some more funding from the county, that we could bring it back up to an adequate building to take care of our animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Tom Johnson. I'm the Chairman of the Town of Lakeside, and I'm the Chairman of the Douglas County Unit of Wisconsin Towns Association. I'm here tonight basically to tell the City Council and the Mayor that the towns in Douglas County, there's 16 of them, we are on board with supporting and trying to help with this shelter any way we can. So, I've heard things that, that there has been problems, that, that's been pinpointed that the towns are the problems. I'm here to tell you the towns are not the problem. One thing that, that I'm kind of happy with is, and proud of, is the communication between the city and the county and the towns, since we've started any type of movement at the Towns Association level, has improved to some respects. But, I'm not sure that I can actually say that is at the county level. But, I'm here to tell you right now that the towns are on board, but willing to support whatever we have to do to fund the shelter, and I urge you strongly not to reduce the size of this facility, but to keep that facility that has been discussed previously on the table for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan O'Neil?
Counselor, Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Déjà vu on the budget. I don't envy you guys. I sat there and went through a lot of them. I thought we were bare bones eight years ago, but I guess we weren't. I'm here to ask you to not take out that $700,000 out of the CIP for our animal shelter. You know, years ago, this started with Mick McKenzie and a few other people, and the city took the lead on this, to build a shelter that would be second to none for our community and for our animals, and for the citizens who live here. When the mayor was running for election, he was totally on board for this. He told me that this should be a state-of-the-art shelter. It should be on Hammond and 28th Street, should be a showplace where people come in and everyone should be, it should be there where everyone could see this. So, I'm very surprised, Mayor, that you have decided to submit a reduction in this shelter. I know the fundraising has not gone as we anticipated, but there's no doubt in my mind, when we go public with this, and the whole community starts chipping in to help, that we'll raise that money and we'll raise more than, more than enough money to have that shelter. So, I'm asking the council, please, please, don't make this decision to kill this size of the building now. We got time, you know? There's, there's nothing that says we have to, to do this right today. Please give us the time to do this. You committed to it, Mayor, you committed to it. Don't reneg on that. The last thing I'm gonna say is, Bruce, this one's for you, because you said, "Good enough for Superior." What you're telling me is, a smaller shelter will be good enough for Superior, and you're going right against what you said, Mr. Mayor, so I'm very disappointed in that.
Thank you, Dan. The, just to, not to reply to that, Dan, but what I heard from the townships is all brand-new to me. First time I've heard it is tonight, as well as maybe the county stepping up. I don't think... Gene, have you heard this before?
I haven't heard that the county was going to contribute financially other than the parcel of land on Tower Avenue. And the last I heard of anything with the townships was probably a number of months ago, and we were literally talking about $200 for an animal. I don't know where it ended up, but I have not heard anything that is significant funding for this.
And I'm very pleased that what we heard tonight is, is here tonight. But heretofore, this very moment, five minutes ago, we never heard a word. And that is the reason why the facility was downsized, because we did not feel that the taxpayers of Superior should pay for all the county and the city. We're 60% of the county as far as population, but it would be, we would be riding our horses out of town if we built the facility that nobody else was gonna participate in and pay for. We're very thankful for the information that was initially received here tonight. Never heard that before, and we're very anxious to follow that discussion.
I guess I'm not really sure who to ask this, but I, I've got a footprint here that I looked at, and I believe it's for a different site adjacent to the, the existing animal shelter. So, I don't know, Gene, either you or Jeff, or... How you doing, Jason? Is there any way that we could approve this CIP, approve the animal shelter contingent upon more donations coming to this? Does that make any sense at all? Not, you know, I understand that there's a cut from what the original was due to the square footage, but is there a way that we could make this work and, and keep on moving forward and, until we get a solid commitment from the county? Tom, you guys seem real on board with the, the town associations. Does that make any sense at all?
You can, definitely. What you, what your starting point is then, is the 2.3 million. And then, it would increase, as I said earlier, based on capital campaign contributions. And it would have to, those contributions would have to increase substantially, whether they were from the capital campaign, or from the county, or from the townships. To go back to the building that was initially a size of, I think, 11,000 square feet, and then when that price take came in for the Tower Avenue site, it's somewhere around 3.7 or 3.8 million, and we saw that there was roadwork that was needed for better access, and we found that there were grading elevation or soil issues that would need to be addressed. We were talking about a project well over 400, or well over 4 million. So, there's a, we cut that back to a, a facility that had the same functional areas, the same number of rooms, the same services could be provided, and we cut it back to, I think, a 98 or 9,500 square foot facility. Got the cost down somewhat, but I don't think there's any problem with doing that, but everybody needs to know that there's a lot of, a lot of additional funding that would be needed to make that happen.
Yeah. I've known something about, with the townships, because I do speak with Roger Laterno quite often, Tom Johnson as well. But as of late, there have been some people who have come forward with this, a major donor, and I'm assuming it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000. I'm working with someone else who's a state of a relative, that is somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 that needs to go to the shelter. And so, I really believe that the, the funding is going to be there, and we, we need to stay the course on the, on the size of this building. It's, it just doesn't make sense to make, build a 63,000, 6,300 square foot building after, you know, we've noticed, we know that Animal Allies has a 10,500 square foot building, and, and that is even inadequate for the animals that, that they bring in. So, I, I really believe that we have to keep this thing, we have to go back to, to the original plan. I, I think that the people will come on board. I think everybody, everybody here has worked so hard. I think one of the main reasons, I think, for this project, I think, kind of going, kind of going south is, is really the, the non-committal of, of the county, not, not the townships. And, you know, I know, I know money is, is an issue, but, you know, abandoning, abandoning these animals, just turning their back, our back on these animals is, is not a good thing. And, you know, the county may not care about the animals, but I, but I certainly do to these people, to these animals that, that would be left out. As far as the county goes, it's, it's a little disappointing. We've had so many meetings with, with them, and, and they certainly made it sound like they were, that they were on board with this, and that's why Douglas County Humane Society signed off on this and said, well, yeah, we will be part of that, of this, of this shelter when, when, when it's built. And so, we'll have, you know, ARF, Douglas County Humane Society, run by Animal Allies. And again, I know that there's, you know, the, it's always, it's a money issue, but I know way back when, when they built, built this place that they were all sitting, sitting in, everybody got together and said, you know, "We need to do, we need to build this thing," and somebody talked to the city and other people talked to the county, and they somehow come up with $11 million to build this place that turned into 55, 55 million. And right now, I think basically, we're not, we're not asking the county for money to build the shelter. We're, we're asking the county for $850 a month, so that we can keep this, keep these, keep these doors open once, once we build it. And the, I really, I was really looking forward to, to this collaboration. I, I talked with, I've talked with Andy, Andy Leshack several times, and I see Doug just walked in the door, and I've talked with him. And Doug, Doug has been very receptive to this. And I said, "What, what, what better project for, for Douglas County and the city to get together as one?" Because, you know, I've always said, and I've said it a million times, you know, Superior, the last time I checked, is a big part of Douglas County. So, let's work together as, as a city, as a county. And again, I can't stress enough Roger Laterno and, and Tom Johnson, and everybody that's out here tonight, you know, supporting this project. I mean, the passion that they, that you have is, is tremendous. You know, Roger, you know, thank you so much for, you know, always, you know, your phone calls and, and your encouragement, saying, you know, "I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna get a meeting together, and I'm gonna talk to people, and we're, we're gonna get this thing to work." And so, now it is, you know, 16 towns that are gonna come together and, and see that this thing happens. And then we're gonna work on the county. And they're, I, I'm sure that they're gonna wanna be a part of this, because, again, the promise there to the Douglas County Humane Society was that they, they will not, they will not abandon the, the animals out there once those people close their doors. And, you know, they've, they've worked so hard, but now they're getting tired, but now they need help, and they, they did, they committed to this thing, you know, admirably, and there's all kinds of people who have, have committed to this thing. And I think the city needs to get behind this project and, again, take care of these lost, abandoned and abused animals. And I get emotional just thinking about it, but I, I thank everybody who's put their heart and soul in it, just like I have. And I guess all I ask tonight, so that, you know, I, I definitely don't want this thing to, to go south. I don't want to lose this amount of money that we may have from this donor. I, I certainly don't want Animal Allies to, to get so upset, because they, they wanted a Douglas County city shelter, and I don't want them to not want to run this thing. I don't know where we'd, we would go from there. So, I think all I'm asking tonight is to take this animal shelter, the issue about the size of this shelter, the downsides of the shelter, and, and refer this to maybe the committee of the whole for, for consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Bridge?
Seeing Chairman Finn came in, I wonder if he heard me comment that somebody should drag him in here when he was walking by the door. See him moving closer to the podium, and that's great. I appreciate your, your being here, Doug. There's a couple thoughts, I, I mean, I have on this that I wonder. I mean, hearing that Duluth has a 10,000 or a little bit more than that square foot shelter in a city that has three times our population and twice the population of our county, makes me wonder, you know, what we really need and what's, what's adequate. I mean, having a 10,000 square foot shelter, that, that sounds great, but, you know, we, we have to be mindful of the money, and hopefully, we're gonna hear something about that here in just a minute. Everything I've heard up until now was that the, you know, the county board was completely non-committal as far as, you know, any type of contribution. The other thing that I, I wonder about a little bit is whether or not we really need to use the location off of, you know, by the fairgrounds off of Tower Avenue. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a nice site, but I, I don't think that that's probably the best use of that property. And we have quite a bit of space where the old shelter is for a new building with, I think according to what we, we saw at a recent meeting, enough room for, for parking and, you know, park close by to take the dogs to, or dogs, animals in general. So, and other than that, I have no problem holding on to this, just to see where we get. I think that'd be good.
Thank you. Chairman Finn?
Good evening. I haven't done this for a long time. The last I did this about 20 years ago, the city council was talking about something regarding the county. And I came here and I was accused of coming in my pajamas, but I didn't do that tonight. Very brief, the county, first of all, and I don't know where, you know, we've struggled, first of all, sites. And the county did donate that site where it's proposed right now. So, that was originally our contribution was that site over there. I don't wanna get into a lot of discussion about what happens and happened in the past. We've had, as the mayor knows and others, we've had lots of meetings about this. And quite honestly, sometime it was like a ping pong ball go back and forth. But again, I can just say the counties willing to work, cooperate, like, just like, and I listened to your budget meeting tonight, and we have ours coming up in three, four weeks. We're willing to work together. If we, if, if the city would like us to have another meeting with the town people to talk about it, we're willing to do that. I had suggested that a couple of months ago, but for whatever reason, it didn't happen. And that's not anybody's fault. But again, part of it, I guess, the only thing I'll say, it's been somewhat frustration, frustrating about what's going on. And that's all I'll say. So, this is an important thing. I have said, one thing I've been extremely consistent on, we can only afford one shelter and provide the services for all the, the animals and the people in Superior and Douglas County. We can't afford going on, that's what happened 25 years ago. We went our own direction, everybody went different directions, we were fighting, and we ended up where we are right now. So, I'm willing to work for you. If the city wants to delay this, the mayor and I'll sit down and we'll get together with the towns association. I'm willing to have another conversation. But the one thing, and I can only speak, I can't speak for the county board, funding wise, it's gonna be difficult for the county to come up with any significant funding. If there's some other way of finding some money or something, again, the towns need to be involved in this. And one of the issues, of course, is you know, all know has been what's the cost for the towns to bring their animals to shelter. And that's been probably the issue. And again, the towns are the same boat everybody else is, where's the money gonna come from? But that's been the issue that hasn't quite been understood. So, again, I'm willing to work with everybody. I couldn't resist coming, I didn't hear, I didn't hear Tom mention my name, but he was probably already out over here. But I, I've done this once before, so this, hopefully I won't do this for another 20 years. But anyway, we're willing to work together and see what can work out if you're willing to delay this. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Doug, Doug, can you stay there?
Sure.
Yeah, Doug, thanks, thanks a lot. I appreciate all those words. And I, and again, you've, you've always been very supportive. You know, I just, I just want you to know that, you know, we also appreciate the land that we gave you. And I'm, I didn't have a lot of control over that. This, this thing in four and a half years has been this big circle, this revolving thing that has gone 360 on me, and now we're right back to a place where some people said that we couldn't build, but, but we are. And I think maybe we can, I think we, think we probably can. We're not, I just want the county to know, you know, and I know you talked about licenses and all that, and that's, and that's great. But we're not asking for anything for this building. You know, we're, we're doing that ourselves. I mean, this is a $2.3 million bonding issue, could be more. We've got a capital campaign going that I, that I'm confident that we're gonna, we're gonna have money for this, for this building. I think some of these, some of these costs, I think, have been kind of inflated, and I think those costs for the building, the building itself are gonna come down. But I did some calculations and I really think that, and I really think that $850 a month, I have that in my head, but that would be, again, not for the, not for the building, but for, just for operating costs. Because the city, city not only is gonna build this thing, we're going to have operating costs. And we're, we've committed, I think, $10,000 a month to this. And it may have to grow at some point. But, you know, the operating costs would allow people from the townships, from the county, to be able to come there with these animals that they find, you know, stray animals, this and that. There's always surrender charges because there's, there's always gonna be people who can't afford to keep their animals and such. And then there's gonna be, there's a certain fee for that. But Rick Saleston is here and he can, if you ever wanna talk with him, he will tell you what it would cost per animals. But especially if you are, you know, if you're, if you're making that monthly donation of, let's say, let's say it's $850 a month, it defrays that cost of when these other animals come in.
Are you talking about, that would be the, if we came up for the, a partnership between towns and the county came up with that money? You talking about beyond that, a fee for each town that's bringing in an animal, or is that it? I'm not sure, am I clear?
Well, and that's somewhat negotiable because I've talked with, oh, now I'm trying to talk, talk to Lieber. I talked to Mark Lieber, and he said, you know, couldn't we come up with some sort of a compromise or an average, an average cost of what it would cost to bring in animals? And so, that, that's, you know, that's a thought.
Let's talk. I mean, again, I think you all know me well enough to know that I'm willing to work with you and try to work this out. I'm not alone. I mean, this is a partnership with the towns, everyone else. So, I mean, let's, let's talk about it. I guess I would ask, and I don't like to interfere with city council business, but I guess I would, if possible, have a, ask for some delay so we can have another discussion and try one more time.
Yeah, yeah. I think a flat rate and then, then there are gonna be times where, and that's, and that'll be for people here in this town to surrender, surrender charges for animals. And, you know, there's a certain amount that, of money that has to go to take care of animals once they're, once they're brought to the shelter.
Anything else? Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Vito.
I just wanna say that I have never heard of an $850 a month charge to the county or anybody else that would be even remotely sufficient to help cover costs for the townships. And especially, I think I just heard that the county wouldn't be asked to pay for any part of the building. So, I would ask that people don't get too excited or the county get hopeful that we're talking about $850 a month because that's extremely small.
I too haven't heard that before. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the anticipation and estimate is the operational cost for 160,000 a year minimum?
We haven't negotiated the future contract to operate this facility. Obviously, obviously, maintenance costs and operating costs will be higher with a larger building. Everybody understands that. So, we've got two issues here. And it, the two issues are that if the council wants to okay approving a larger facility that handles the county animals, somebody needs to significantly contribute to the cost of that building, or the city taxpayers will be paying the whole bill. The other part is the future operating cost that needs to be addressed as well.
Counselor Bridge.
Just to, you know, reiterate and build a little bit on what Gene said here, I don't think anybody should walk out of here even remembering any of the numbers that were mentioned in the last five minutes. You know, there's gonna be some significant costs associated with this. Until there's actual talks with the towns and county board members, nobody has a clue as to where this is gonna go, other than that we hold it in committee this evening to see where we can get. But for us to build a 10,000 square foot building and we're paying it all and somebody else is gonna pay less than $1,000 a month, I mean, that's, I, I wouldn't support that. That's just, that isn't gonna happen. I can't see it. There's no money there to do that, not, not even close.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah. Is it okay if I speak a third time? And that's something, Gene and Tom, something I just threw out there. I mean, and that's, and that's a frustration thing because we were getting, the figure we were getting before that was, was zero. You know, we all know that. It was, it was zero. And so, I'm just trying to throw things out there to, like Doug says, let's go to the table, let's, let's negotiate this thing. And, you know, we've been told that they, they had no money for the building, but maybe they would have money for the operating costs. And that's, and that's the main thing for me, so that we keep this thing open. You know, we have bonded the money, and I think that the money of the capital campaign is gonna bring in a considerable amount of money. So, you know, if, if anybody has any more suggestions about, you know, about funding this thing, you know, please, please call me, talk to me, email me, whatever. But it's just frustrating and I'm just trying to throw some things out there to get this thing to, to work so that we don't have to downsize it where it's, where it's just city and, and then we're just, we're paying for it ourself and it's not gonna be big enough. So, that's, I'm just throwing those things out there.
Thank you. Allow me to put a little bit of history to this as I know it. And I'm a latecomer. Counselor McKenzie and Director Vito have been at the pinnacle of this thing for many years and they're equally passionate about this as everybody here, to a person, about doing the right thing that's best for the community and the county, hopefully. The first introduction I had to this project, somewhat first, as far as the important level of it, is with regard to the design and site selection. The site selection has been very arduous, as most people that have been involved know. We went to three different, possibly five different sites in the, in the end. The primary, the premier site was unavailable because of the FAA and BOA causing probably a two-month delay in, for approval of the site at the airport reserve. There were some larger parcels that are available, but probably would be stand for a better, a better use, as Counselor Bridge had indicated, higher and better use. The county offered the site on the south end of the racetrack on Hammond Avenue crossing the Amorti Terminal, which was very, very, very helpful and very welcomed. Unfortunately, that site, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Getzmann, but that site probably is about 150,000 in soil problems and elevation. There's no way to get to it once 46th Street is closed due to the taxiway for Kestrel aircraft. So, and that would require people to go on 54th Avenue, south end down Hammond to get to it, which is totally, be totally unacceptable for access as well as visual. What we need for that facility, visibility is primary. And then we would have had to put a $300,000 road from Tower to Hammond, which we do not have money for. Compounded that with the fact that the architects and Animal, Animal, what's the name of the company out in Colorado?
Animal Arts.
Animal Arts came in with an estimated cost of 3.8 million dollars. So, you have a 3.8, a $300,000 road and another 150,000 of minimal soil condition issues. You're up to 4.2 or 3 million dollars. Then, and I apologize if I misunderstood this, but my understanding was there were the townships and villages until tonight, I never heard a thing about them wanting to participate at all. So, that begged the question of, what are we going to do? The city taxpayers can't afford a 4.3 million when we bonded for 2.5. And the site is ill-advised. So, we talked about what about the current area that will accommodate a very large building and side yards and so forth at the, around where the current shelter is, but closer to the, closer to Hill Avenue. So, the discussions went on and on, how are we gonna afford this thing when we have, we've committed to 2.5 with the understanding that fundraiser, fundraising would accomplish at least 400,000, if I recall correctly, or more. As has been suggested, that, that capital campaign hasn't hit the highway yet, but what little has been experienced is not very favorable. And that's not a, that's not a degradation against anybody or any organization, it's a fact of life. Nonprofit, nonprofit businesses and capital campaigns across the spectrum are really suffering because of the economy. People just don't have that much disposable income, even though everybody in this room and everybody in the community and everybody in the county has a passion for doing the right thing and the best thing. So, that brings us to the discussion tonight. Once again, I wanna thank Counselor for his very, very dedicated and long commitment to this and so. But we, we wanna do what's right, as Dan said, I'm, he's correct. I don't either want to have good enough for Superior. We need to get to where we need to be to help and serve everybody and the animals that we love. So, we have a little ways to go. We might be able to get there with total unity. So, I just wanna give you a little perspective on what I've viewed in the short time I've been here.
I have one more person.
I'm sorry. A Dr., Dr. Bob?
Hi, I'm Bob McClellan. I'm a Superior resident and owner of Superior Animal Hospital. And I, I'm not gonna take too much of your time here because there's been a really good discussion on this. And, you know, I, I too feel like this part of the budget should be at least postponed or tabled temporarily because, you know, I was part of the, I've been involved with the shelters and the humane societies for many years. And they do a great job with what they have. And I really commend the city for wanting to do something right here because it's a deplorable situation currently with the shelter, and we don't have to talk about that at all. The city started off great and, you know, the, the Humane Society of the United States did a community survey, seeing, you know, the number of animals that would need to be taken care of here in the city. And I think maybe they included the county in this too, but I think this 10,000 square foot building didn't just get pulled out of the sky and it wasn't comparing something to Duluth. It was based on some, you know, animal numbers, actually. And, you know, whatever Duluth has isn't, I mean, it's nice as a comparison, it's just sort of coincidental that the size of the building that was proposed here is similar to the, to the Duluth Animal Allies building. But I just think that we're be underserving the, the animals and the needs of the community by, you know, downsizing it as, as far as what's being proposed. And I'd just like to consider further discussion on that. So, thank you. And I'd be more than happy to be a part of helping, you know, research and try to work some of these numbers. I mean, it's amazing to me that this building and the Animal Arts has come up with some pretty high estimates for the size of the, this building. You know, at Superior Animal Hospital, we built a 10,000 square foot building that probably has more plumbing, more electrical, more computers, more of everything than would be included in the animal shelter. And granted, it was nine years ago, but, you know, I don't know, we didn't spend that kind of money building that building. And it's a nice facility. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Cirque.
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. Good discussion tonight. As I know, probably I'll get volunteered to help with some negotiations of this. This is gonna take some time. I knew that was coming. This is gonna take some time and it's gonna be kinda fun, I think, Frog, right? We're gonna be dealing with a lot of townships and villages, the county, how we structure agreements, how long these agreements are. It's gonna be complicated. And I think we have to be prepared that potentially, there may not be some participants, and how are we gonna deal with those? Things of that nature. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna poo-poo the situation. I think it's great, I think we need it. However, it's gonna be, it's gonna be arduous and it's not gonna happen by next meeting and it's probably not gonna happen by the end of the year. I'm just, I guess I'm just kinda laying it out there for you. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Well, I agree. I mean, we all get that it won't be easy, but I think the scheduling component is, is impossible to, to take lightly. And, you know, I, I think when we, when we met with the Douglas County Humane Society recently, it was to be very transparent and very see-through with regards to where we thought the scope of this project was headed. Because we know them to have a facility, we know them to have operating costs and, and their own agenda and their, and their own mission. And, and I can't remember exactly when you were scheduled to fold up, but we wanted to respect or, or be fully absorbed by Animal Allies. Fold up sounds a little harsh. But, you know, we wanted to be fully transparent and even if, even if it costs some hurt feelings about that notion and about that timetable. So, I think it's important to get out there that we could work the town circuit for a year, I think. And I don't think that's an exaggeration at all when we're talking 16, 20. And I don't think that's an exaggeration at all when we're talking 16, 20, townships, villages, or a combination thereof. Add to that any negotiations we might affect with the county. And, and again, I, I bring some amateur number crunching to this, but, and I know we've been invited to forget all the numbers mentioned tonight, but when I hear 850 a month, I'm hearing something that probably doesn't come close to 9% of, of the city's out-of-pocket operating costs on an annual basis for a shelter of a lot of size. So, and I know no one's asking us to be married to 850. I just, I've heard that number a lot tonight. So with, with, with those suggestions and those goals in mind, and I, and they're admirable, I, I want to echo Mr. Cirque's concerns, which are the timing of this, particularly when you're talking to a bunch of people that I think have been viewed as key staff, maybe we're not anymore, which would be fine. Hearing for the first time tonight that the county and the townships are interested and willing and in fact want to and are rushing to engage meaningfully in the dollars aspect of life, that is, that is something that, that we aren't, that's a message we haven't heard yet. So we've, we've gone quite, quite a bit piece down the road, and a number of us are going to go home very confused tonight. So I, I'm just inviting you to consider, the big picture is that the preliminary plans folk for or called for or resulted in some, some, some good people and some good operations sort of voluntarily throwing in the towel in terms of the continuation of their, their own existence, independent of Animal Allies. And if, if this is going to be a game changer in the context of, of the timeframes, then obviously you folks, tonight's not the first time you, you've thought about that, but that's a, that's a big deal that I haven't, I can't envision how that goes. And I'm not saying it doesn't go well, I'm just saying I haven't, I can't envision how that goes. With the timeframes that have been already programmed versus the likelihood that we won't be able to stay to that.
Frog, just a question for you. Would it be appropriate to hold this part of the CIP budget in committee? Or what would be the, what would be the best motion if we were?
You can, Counselor, you can do that. I, I don't think, as Frog was mentioning, I don't think we're going to know the, the final outcome of this anytime real soon. But what would happen is if you, if you, again, decided that more money would be allocated to this, you do have the whole list of projects in front of you, something has to drop off to keep this big balance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not looking at that. I guess it's quite confusing, as you said. Or is it a better idea to approve the CIP budget as it is contingent upon further negotiations with the county and the towns? Is that doable?
I think to the extent that you want to arm your department heads with some, I, some sense of what they have to look forward in the context of capital improvement projects, and I know there's, probably every department, mine and a couple of smaller ones excepted, have, have plans and have equipment and have projects they need to pursue. I mean, if you want to arm them with, with a sense for what, what the funding looks like, CIP-wise, I think an approval of the budget is about the only way to do that. Obviously, you can leave a couple of question marks along the way, but when you're talking about, and this is not my area, but when you're talking about a flex of a potential million dollars or a million and a half dollars in, dollars in one project that will impact every other necessarily, that's where it gets a little goofy, I think.
I think you have the option of really handling this in a couple of different ways. And if you do approve it as it is now, with the understanding that if agreements are reached with the county and the townships to allow a larger building, you can certainly make your motion that way, and then the rest of the CIP can go forward. Now, just as a reminder, when we bring this forward to you as counselors every year, you're officially adopting one year at a time, you're tentatively adopting what comes in the future. So you do have a lot of leeway with making changes in the future, and if you do adopt it, then at least the, the, as Frog mentioned, the department heads that have the larger projects can move forward with that. One of them that I'm thinking of is Tower Avenue, which I believe we'll be having bids for in January. So we, that's a large project, and you, you do want to get approval to move forward with that.
Okay. My only concern, Gene, would be that if we approve this, that it doesn't mean that we are downsizing to a 60. I understand that the 2.3 million dollars is for this footprint.
Yeah.
Okay? So if we approve the whole CIP, I want to make sure that we're still looking at a larger facility with cooperation from the towns and the county.
Yes.
So I, I just don't know how to make the motion to, to have that in there.
Yeah, you could make a, a motion to approve this CIP and to continue working with the county and the townships to, and, and the capital campaign, to see what level of additional support can, you can get beyond 2.3 million, and then you can work with what size of a building that would mean.
Or can we approve it as is and just not stick a shovel in the ground until we have additional funding or additional cooperation? Can you help me, Mayor?
The question before us right now is what to do with the animal shelter issue and not the rest of the CIP. That's where we are. That's what we've gotten to by motion and vote. Whether we vote to approve the CIP is afterwards. So we've gotten ahead of ourselves here. We need to deal, figure out what to do. And I'll make a motion to hold the, the animal shelter issue in committee with the comment that if we approve the CIP afterwards, because that's what we've decided to do, then the animal shelter issue is going to need more money to get to a bigger building.
With all due respect to everybody here, some of the components, the conversation is, is well appreciated. Some of the components that are required here or necessary here, I should say, with regard to the, the larger discussion is addressing the participa, if, if we want to serve the entire county, participation that may be available through the townships and villages and the county. Number two is the capital campaign is going, going to play a crucial role in this effort, and we're hoping that that, once it gets unveiled with some very major contributors, it'll bring other people out to say me too. The third thing is, and this was brought up in the meeting that we had, and I clearly, I know folks from Humane Society and Animal Allies and others were there, that what struck me was when it was described what, what the animal hospital cost to build and Animal Allies in relationship to the, the Animal Arts estimate to build this, I said, whoa, something's out of line here. With regard to what they were able to achieve on those two, two facilities and structures in comparison to what it's estimated to build this 10,000 or whatever it was, square foot building, way off the mark as far as being high. So I think there's at least three elements here that we need to further. One is, is the capital campaign, get it rolling. The discussion that Jason and Frog mentioned with the townships and villages and the county. And then get an analysis, and I know, you know, maybe I'm foolish in suggesting, let's get another analysis with regard to construction estimate for the building, when in fact, without a much, well, without any exaggeration, this estimate is a million to, million four to a million five higher than it was to build Animal Allies. Something's wrong here. Counselor?
I would like to second Counselor Bridge's motion to hold the animal shelter in committee.
Counselor Kenzie?
Yeah, and just, I guess a friendly amendment, if that makes sense, just to make sure that there, there will be that option for a, for a bigger, bigger building that will include Douglas County, Douglas County Humane Society, as long as that's in there, so that we have that option.
Is that amendment to the motion?
Well, that's why we're holding it.
Yeah, but I just want, I just want to make sure that that's in there.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I want to thank everybody for their sincere participation and dedication. We will get there. We will get there.
Motion to approve capital improvement budget.
Second.
Heard the motion and second to approve the capital improvement program. Counselor? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.2, Assistant Finance Director Sahuski is submitting the 2013 library budget.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.3, Information Services Manager Shay is requesting the City of Superior enter into an agreement with Douglas County, School District of Superior, WITC, and UW Superior to form the community area network.
You've heard the motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
That's okay. Mr. Shay here tonight? No? Let's see, who else could I ask? Anybody here? Okay, the question I would have in this particular case is that maybe somebody may, may, or may not know, is what exactly, who's going to be, I understand, you know, I know where the network's going as far as who's being able to use it and so on and so forth, but is it going to be for public use too? Is it going to the library? I can't remember if it's going to the library or not. And so is that going to be used for any type of programs for the public?
That is a question I do not know. I, if you wish, we could, I'm sure we could hold this and ask that Dan attend the next meeting to explain.
Can you motion a motion?
You could make a motion to refer, sir.
Okay, I can make a motion to refer to, to Finance Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait, wait.
She doesn't like it.
I don't think it.
Next meeting, yeah, not finance.
Oh, sure.
They didn't want it.
I think they just wanted it.
Okay.
I made a motion.
No, I made that motion because there, there is, you know, finances available upon this request too, so. But even though that's not the issue, I just referred it to that committee, so.
If you wish, you could maybe get a quicker answer, though, by not referring it to Finance Committee and just bringing it back to the October 16th council meeting, and we'll have Dan here for all, for all questions. Otherwise, you'd be waiting for November 7th.
Okay, I'll change that to referring it to the October 16th city council meeting. Thanks.
Heard the motion and second. Second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carried.
Item 7.4, City Attorney Prowl is recommending to approve modifications to the indemnity provisions in the Vista and both house leases.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify, pardon me?
Counselor Bender has a question.
Counselor?
Yes, well, actually, if you look at the first page of the 7.4 of the memorandum that came from City Attorney Frog Prowl, second paragraph, last line, it says the leases would have to be modified. I think it's supposed to be, be modified to conform to state law.
Yeah, you're right, there's an M that should be a B. So I'll say.
And I'm, I'm sure was, I'm sure was the kind of typo that I always have, but my only question on this is, is this going to be any cost to the city?
No.
Okay, well, then I'm in favor.
Should note that the other two paragraphs are error-free, virtually error-free. Probably 99.99 percent of the document.
I read everything, as you can tell. Thanks.
I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 7.5, Planning Director Circus submitting a request by WISDOT for a temporary limited easement from the City of Superior for property located along Highway 2 in the town of Amnicon.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
7.6, Police Chief Ljesin and City Attorney Prowl are recommending approval of the law enforcement mutual aid agreement with the City of Duluth.
Heard the motion and second, discussion.
Stimulate any typos in that memo.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carried.
Item 7.7, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to approve the Donahue and Associates proposal to provide detailed design of the wastewater treatment plant wet weather treatment optimization design project for $34,200.
Motion approved. Heard the motion and second, discussion. Counselor Olson?
Jeff, why can't we do this in-house?
The, the short answer is the staff that we have don't have the capability of drawing up plans to modify the wastewater plant. So that's what this is. It's specialized design to increase the capacity of our plant in times of rain and wet weather like we've seen, where we have backups and things and lift stations, or we don't have the ability to pass all that flow to the plant. So it's, it's something that's, it's highly specialized design, it's over and above what we have on staff currently.
So if we wouldn't have had a wet weather event this summer, we wouldn't be doing this?
No, this, this is one of the projects that's in that long line of projects to increase capacity of the plant that we keep bringing back on that list. We're looking ahead to rate increases and to keep in compliance with our DNR permit to avoid and minimize overflow, sanitary sewer flows. This is another one of those projects we've talked about that would go to reduce the overflows that we have. So this is, we've had, we've had the I and I issue for years with the older lines that we have in town, and to get that flow down to the plant and be able to treat it and handle it, that's, this is one of those projects coming up. So it's not, it's not in response to a specific rain event, it's a continual series of events.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carried. Motion carried.
Item 7.8, Chief Building Inspector Dan Curran is requesting to waive the permit fees required to work at the Old Firehouse and Police Museum and the Douglas County Historical Society Building.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second. Counselor Bridge?
Building inspection, still going to inspect all the work, right?
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item, item nine, business by Counselors, Counselor Herrick had an item he just wanted to read.
Yeah, I received this letter. I don't know if any of the counselors received it, but it's addressed, it states September 7th, 2012. It's addressed City Council President Mike Herrick and council members. Dear President Herrick and council members, in July, I had an experience that I believe is worth telling you about. Through Pilgrim Lutheran Church, I helped take seven Superior High School students to Wilmington, North Carolina, where they joined over three hundred, three hundred other high school students from 13 states. Divided into 54 small work crews, these students and their leaders did major repair, rehabilitation, and new construction on 45 homes in Wilmington. They did this in just five days. The homes belonged to families who truly needed this work to make their homes safer and to do necessary repairs. Residents who were physically able to almost always worked along the students. Besides doing extra work on the houses, the students connected with the people who lived in them in ways that left them stronger, more hopeful, and better able to find a way ahead. The students worked for almost a year before the trip to raise money for van rental, gas, and food. To keep costs down, they slept on church floors on the way to and from North Carolina. In Wilmington, they slept on high school classroom floors and ate in the school cafeteria. Much more noteworthy is that every student also Much more noteworthy is that every student also raised several hundred dollars for the construction materials used in homes in Wilmington. About 60 adult leaders were there with the students. We leaders did not know each other. Leaders of three separate work crews searched through all the other leaders until they found the guy who came with the students from Superior, Wisconsin. These leaders spent that time finding me to make sure I heard firsthand from them what an excellent job the Superior students were doing in every way on their crews. The students are Johnny Curfee, Kate Burgum, Brittany Smith, Grace Elinen, Jack Curfee, Molly Burgum, and Max Austin. They truly were in our Superior. I give you their example from North Carolina because your work contributes to developing Superior people. These students obviously got a lot from their community and then gave a lot. You deserve some real credit for your part in who they are and what they did. I think that these seven students reflected what your work is ultimately about, when they so wonderfully represented our community. Thank you sincerely, Will Mochen Pastor.
Thank you.
Item 10.1, is a resolution of the City of Superior relating to state trust fund loan for storm damage projects.
Second.
You've heard the motion as second. Counselor Olson?
I have a question. I'll run it here.
Carry it.
Yeah, I just have a question. Gina, on this, is this a loan actually from the state, or?
Yes.
And was there, was this the only interest rate they could offer on this loan?
They base their interest rates on the amount of the loan, and so they are set. If you're having a smaller or a shorter-term loan, the interest rate is higher. And so this is, for the amount, the $5 million, it is set by the Board of Land in, what's the name, Dan? Commissioners of Land? Commissioner of Lands.
Okay, even if it's used for a catastrophe, I mean, they still?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Jeff Getzmann, we have a handout in front of us here stating that some guy named Wesley isn't going to be able to make the committee, the whole meeting, on October 16th. Do we have other railroad representatives, so we'll hold it without him?
Yeah, we do. We have a couple of railroad representatives. We have the DOT, we have Tammy Wagner from the FRA, and we're going to have somebody from SRF Consulting, who's been doing some quiet zone work for us, come and present.
Very good.
So we should have plenty of discussion.
We gonna hear anything new?
I don't know. I need to get some more concerns from you folks before that meeting, so I plan to, I'll send you a note here in the next day or so.
Any other business coming from this body? Heard the motion as second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.